Good evening, everyone. We are here for our January study session. Director Zavala is unable to attend. I'm filling in. We have a few items on the agenda. We'll start with roll call Director Decker.
I'm here.
Director Barrows, excuse me.
Here.
Director Smith?
Here.
And I am here. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Snell for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Director Sproul. I am pulling up the screen here and hopefully everybody can see that. We good?
Yep.
So, welcome everyone here on our last meeting in January. Just a couple of quick notes. Again, we're still thanking you. It's still the month of school board recognition. So, we're going to continue to share our appreciation for you and your service. And the last in-person meeting we had, January 10th, we had our strategic planning update. And so, we're continuing with some community engagement. Have an event on January 31st with some of the community and business leaders that will be hosting. So, looking forward to that opportunity. And then, we'll continue to cycle back in those regular board meetings with information for you about priorities that are emerging and also just opportunities ahead. Tonight is our first steering committee meeting. So, all those advisories that we've talked about, students, staff, families, community. Those are all having representatives come together and they have their first meeting tonight. So, a couple of our staff are unable to attend this meeting because they're at that one this evening. So, we're grateful for the patrons that are giving their time and staff are giving their time and students that are giving their time to really help this plan come to fruition. And then, as I've been updating the public throughout the year related to our budget is we do have a levy renewal on the ballot for February 14th. And I do know the voter pamphlets have come out and I think the ballots will be coming out soon if they haven't already. And so, just encourage people if they have any questions about the ballot issue that we have an information page on our website. And also, we're happy to answer any questions if people just want to call or email the district office about that levy. Our goal is to make sure that the public understands what the levy does, what it doesn't do, the funding, all that stuff. And it is because we have an expiring levy. So, every three to four years, we go back to our voters and ask them for their continued support, which we greatly, greatly appreciate. So, with that, I think Director Sproul will just kind of start moving us into content if that's okay. All right. So, we have several areas tonight that we're going to update the board and also give an opportunity for comment and discussion. And they're under two of our goal areas that we've settled on this year. One is around culture and climate and the other one is around resources and using an equity lens. And you can see specific topics within those two goal areas. And so, the first topic tonight is an update on our student advisory. And I think we have a student Avery with us. And if Avery is here, we can hopefully promote him and get ready to share.
Promote it.
Hi Avery.
Hello.
Thank you for being here. I'll turn it over to you, okay?
Some connectivity issues there. If where you can try disabling your video, that might help you out.
I think what I might do is just see, we might advance to the next topic and see if Avery might be able to reconnect with us. And Avery, if you can't, we totally understand. Sometimes that happens and we're glad that you were trying to make time tonight. And we have emailed back and forth a little bit today, so I can kind of share if it's not able to come in. So, is it okay Director Sproul if I may be moved? Oh, Avery, are you, can you hear us? I love that Avery is multitasking, trying to make it work.
There we go. Okay, there. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Shoot, Avery, we heard you say, can we hear you? And then, we couldn't hear you anymore. So, I think we'll go ahead and go to the next topic. And then, we'll see Avery if it works. You can come back on. And if not, no worries at all. We'll update the board and go from there, okay? All right. So, I'm going to advance. I'm going to reshare my screen. And I believe Christie, you're up with the next topic.
So sorry, you're able to hear me now.
Oh. We're going to try one more time, Avery. We can't hear you.
Okay. I'm so sorry about that. So sorry. Okay. So, hopefully my wifi stays good now. Okay. So, hello, I'm Avery with very bad wifi right now. But I'm going to try to get through this in one sitting. So, I am from the student advisory board. And what we're working on right now is a way to improve the lives of our students at school all across VPS. And one of the main ways we're doing that is by trying to focus our efforts on a sort of research question. It will be a kind of like a guiding.
Okay, I'm gonna just go ahead and continue with Avery, what I think he's going to share. And then, we'll loop back. And I apologize. We love having our students on here and I know Avery is working hard to be on here tonight. So, as Avery said, we have been looking at a series of research questions. And this list that you see in front of you is the four that the team kind of settled in on after a couple of meetings and some discussion and some wordsmithing from different people on the team. And then, our last meeting was a Zoom meeting. And so, we've been rotating between in-person meetings and Zoom meetings. And all the staff or all the student advisory participants had an opportunity to discuss each of these questions. Kind of think about the benefits of using this question or maybe some of the drawbacks. And then, we did some voting. So, and when I say "we," it was just students. And so, after that discussion time, they rated the questions. And they had not only what is your first choice, but they also asked what's your second choice and your third choice. So, we saw some different patterns emerging. But the question that kind of seemed to get the most energy and the students were most interested in was this question about reinforcing respect and empathy within our school community. And so, how can we reinforce respect and empathy within our school community? And they were talking about through different events and other experiences that perhaps not just individually as one school, but collectively, how could they look at that and really make a difference with belonging, as Avery said at the beginning? And how do they positively impact students' experiences? You can see these other questions are just amazing. And so, in particular, this first one, when they talk about what types of training could be introduced to teachers and staff to help build better relationships. You know, we as staff saw that as like, okay, we need to tap into these students. Even if it's not their first question, like, how do we perhaps gather their input and use that in some way when we come back to school in the fall of '23? And so, just talked with another staff member about that this evening. So, it's not that the other ones aren't going to get energy, but certainly a student advisory wants to bring something forward as part of their relationship with you as a school board related to this respect and empathy approach. And so, I'll pause and see if Avery is able to add anything at this point that maybe I missed or that he would like to build on and/or questions from the board.
If you guys can hear me. So, sorry about that again. I think that you covered it all. I know our goal just going forward would just be to try to, you know, best help all of the students that are in VPS. And we're going to try to find the best ways possible to really increase a sense of respect and empathy between everybody. And so, are there any questions from anybody? Yes.
I'm curious, is this intended as a multi-year goal or is this the rest of the year? I mean, is, because it looks like we'll be monitoring on a regular basis. But is that through the end of this school year and then, we would establish a new goal every year?
I think that what we're thinking right now is that this goal will most likely span multiple years because it's a goal that will take a long time to develop, you know, fully with everybody in VPS. And so, right now, we're just going to, for this year, we're going to really try to start it and going to try to get off on a good footing with it. And then, we'll most likely continue that on into future years.
Thank you. That's what I was anticipating based on the goal. One other, I would say just food for thought. I'd love to know what students, how we measure if we're successful with this goal. So, and that's to take back to your student advisory committee to talk about how do we know that we've improved the reinforcement of respect and empathy within our school communities?
Yeah, absolutely. That would be a good thing to talk about with this. I know that we're going to be using the panorama data that will come out in the future to see if, if just by that data, if it's improved and not. But it would also be good to find other ways, like you're saying. Yes, thank you. I'll tell them that at our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Is there any other questions or comments from board directors?
This is Kathy. Oh, go ahead, Tracy.
Say, I don't have any questions, but I am excited to hear kind of the ideas that are generated from this question and just what kind of the variety of ideas that students have about reinforcing respect and empathy. I'm just, I'm looking forward to hearing as you guys talk about that.
Thank you. We're looking forward to coming up with them because I know that somebody will probably be at the next meeting that you all have to sort of explain that. So, we'll have lots of good ideas generated by that point.
And this is Kathy Decker. And I just want to say, that's a heavy lift. I know they all seem like really heavy lifts, but the respect and empathy piece, particularly now, not just within our school communities, but in our community as a whole, we could all use a little bit of that more. And so, I am like Director Barrows, very interested to see what kind of ideas you come up with, what kind of events and what kind of programs you do that help promote that. And as a kindergarten teacher, I know it's like the first thing you try and do with the kids, but it's a heavy lift. It's a whole life thing that you have to keep doing and redoing. So, I'm very impressed that that was the one that kept coming up. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Avery, thanks so much for your patience and looping back in. I'm really glad that you're able to do the Q and A there at the end. And our next meeting, I think it's February 2nd for student advisory. We're back in person this time. So, we do that after school. And we have rotated around the district. So, this next time is at Flex Academy. And I know their Flex Academy is super excited to host. I just went and met with their principal about it. We always have some food and then, there's a tour of the school. And then, we jump into the agenda. And as Avery said, like, how do, now we got a question. Like, what do we do with it? Right? So, that'll be kind of exciting for the staff to, or for the students to get involved with. So, with that, I'm going to keep us moving, Director Sproul, if that's okay? And I'll reintroduce Christie again. And Christie, do you want me to just keep the slides on dry for you?
Yes, if you would, that'd be great. Good evening. And I'm giving a disclaimer upfront. Last time I saw you, I had a cough. I still have it, but now I have cough drops. So, hopefully, hopefully, we'll get through this more gracefully. So, Jeff asked me to come and provide a high level kind of where are we now, what are we up to? And so, I get to talk to you about highly capable and all the different things that we're up to with multilingual also. So, we are about to have our fourth meeting of the High Cap Advisory Committee, fondly known as the HAC. We're meeting with parents tomorrow and it's been great. I think it's been a great exercise for us as a district team to put together our ideas around where we're hoping to go and how do we give people enough information and research and time to talk with one another to help bring them along. So, I think it's been good learning, leadership learning for us. And we read this to them every time, just as a reminder of what our goal is and that they're not, they don't make the decision, but they will help inform our decision along the way. So, we read this every time and you can go next, Jeff. And what we've been really working on the last two times is defining the problem of practice. The first time we had them all together, it was like self-contained or die. And so, we've been trying to understand like, well, why do we bring you together? What are we really talking about? We're not trying to just take things away, but we have a problem of practice. And it's that our current structure isn't equitable and doesn't really meet the needs of all of our identified students. We did decide over the last month that we're going to narrow this body of work with this particular group to K5 because the work got pretty big and we realized we wouldn't really adequately get into secondary. So, we let them know the last time we met that we would be expanding it in the spring. Once we got somewhere, we got some information to you. You guys had a chance to look at it and give us some feedback. Then, we would keep working on how are we going to approach secondary? But K5 seemed like the most immediate place we needed to start. This is our goal. We also read this to them every time. And we had them read the equity policy, the High Cap policies. We've been trying to ground them in who we are as a district as well. Tomorrow night, we're going to be sharing with them our beliefs, the team's beliefs around what equitable services look like again to help them flesh out like, we keep saying like, they want everything and a pony, but we've got to be firm in our beliefs and our policies to be able to really meet the equity need and the learning need of these kids. So, I think there's just one or two more here, Jeff. This is the bulk of the work is we're really highlighting for them that in our district, we've had kind of two ends of a continuum. And both ends have pluses and minuses. And in the middle, there's not much. So, we've started with, you can get differentiation in your Gen Ed classroom or you can go to self-contained, but there should be, we've talked about, I think, a continuum of services. And what we really want to impress upon them is identification is going to drive what services a kid needs. Because, and that is part of our process too. I've talked to a lot of you individually, so I forget if I've said this collectively. So, forgive me if I'm repeating, but we've let them know that we're alongside of this refining and expanding our identification process as well, but that it's not a part of what the committee is doing. But being clear about as we get better at identifying what a kid's needs are, we'll be able to better place them along a continuum of services that meets their needs. So, these are all the things, services that you might find in the middle of a continuum. We've been having them research, what do these mean? Which districts have implemented what? What have we tried? What have we not tried? Tomorrow night, we'll be talking about the effect sizes of each of these different programs. Whitworth, is it Whitworth? Not Whitman. I think it's Whitworth University. I've been, Northern Washington has a whole department on high cap education. And so, we've been using their research. So, we're going to teach this group a little bit about what does effect size mean? What does it mean in an educational setting? And where do you get the most bang for your buck? And what we're talking about is for the amount of effort and money that it costs to implement a particular service, how many kids can it reach and how effective is it at actually meeting a high cap kid's goal or learning need? So, that's our work for tomorrow. We're going to play a little game where they have cards with these different pieces on them. And they actually have to build a continuum trying to leverage both the accessibility, like how many kids can participate and how many goals can be reached and what's the effect size? So, we're going to give, I think we're giving them eight cards and they only get to choose four. So, we're trying to again utilize their brains, their research, what they're talking about to help us. We didn't want them to build a whole continuum. So, we don't want them to get fixed on anything either. We're trying to help them stay flexible and so that we can be realistic with what is a budget going to buy and how are we going to get organized? And how long is this going to take? Because it's not all going to be fixed next year, unfortunately. So, I think there might be one more. These are things that have come up quite a bit and they're some of the things that we've also talked about as a district team and board. There's a lot of interest in budget and, you know, should it be general fund or high cap fund? And how's high cap funding utilized? I've started to talk to Jeff about that. But where does self-contained fall on the continuum? What does it mean for us? I didn't get very far. Transportation and then identification. So, those are just things that were, that are always swirling in their midst. So, I'm going to put myself on mute and you can ask me some questions.
Anyone have questions for Christie?
I don't, I don't have a question necessarily, but I really like how you've kind of laid out the emphasis on the continuum of services because I think most of the time when, you know, people think about High Cap, it's kind of like an either or, you know, it's completely Gen Ed, you know, with supports there or it's self-contained. And I think looking at all of the options in between and looking at, I like how you said, you know, it's going to look different. And, you know, when we identify what students' different needs are. And so, I just like that that's the focus on the continuum versus is it going to be this or this? So.
Thank you. Yeah, we really want to be able to offer a lot more.
This is Kathy. Christie, I really love the whole design of this parent advisory committee that you've put together. I love how you've not necessarily guided them, but gave them, give them a framework of which to fit, in which to work so that they're flexible enough to pivot when they realize, well, here's a barrier. So, now what do we do? And I'm incredibly impressed that you were able to take this group of people and get them to a point where the discussion has become so much broader. So, thank you so much. That's a lot of hard work, not only the academic piece, but also as we've been talking, the social, emotional, the empathy and the understanding of others. You know, like, we've got to make this work for everyone. So, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. It's the team. The team is doing a fabulous job. And it really is, this is a hearts and minds endeavor as well as a research and best practice dive. Yeah. Thank you.
I have one question. You mentioned sharing practices at comparable districts. And I just, if I could hear more, because I know I attended that session. It was alongside you. But I think it's sometimes very insightful to see what other comparable districts are doing to understand. I mean, everyone has the same challenges of limited resources and, you know, high demand. But were, was that Washington districts or?
They're all in Washington. They have a similar pop student population as us. We wanted to get districts that would have a similar budget stream as us. So, we could see what they're doing with their money. And some were pretty unimpressive and some were like, oh, that's really cool. The team is super interested in Pasco. They have a really well-thought-out identification process and variety of things that kids might do. And then, they offer the same thing in their dual language programs. And then, they're looking at this continuum as well and looking at the self-contained as kind of the end of the continuum where that's really meeting the needs of our very exceptional kids who are not going to find a lot of inspiration or connection in a Gen Ed classroom where we think a lot of, most of our high cap kids would. And then, we know part of what the team's really planning for is, where do we start with professional learning? Because we know we have a lot of what we heard is from teachers who didn't feel confident. They didn't feel like it was possible. We believe it's possible. We want them to feel confident and have the skills and resources that they need. So, that's a big piece of what our planning will be once the committee work is winding down.
One other question I had, you said you were talked through the committee or you read through the High Cap policy in the district and also the equity policy. I know that there will be some programmatic recommendations that come to the board, but I'd be interested also if there's feedback on the High Cap policy. You know, if there's updates that the board should consider to be more forward-thinking in the way we look at like continuum of services or how we are, if there are updates needed around identification, etc.
I think so, yes. As we bring you this recommendation and kind of flesh out the identification piece and the professional learning piece, then we'll need to have the policy follow that.
Okay. Well, I agree with Director Decker and Director Barrows. I really appreciate just, I think this was going to be our inaugural kind of process of change, that kind of navigating this change and doing it with community input. And I really appreciate the attention to detail and just the thoroughness. And it seems like really intentional engagement. So, thank you.
You are most welcome. And again, I give the credit to the team. They're working really hard. They're working well together. And I give credit to Mr. Snell, Dr. Snell over here, who pushed me over the edge to take on this big project. Because it's been really good learning.
Thank you, Director Smith. I didn't want to.
My one question was about board policy. You beat me to it. So.
Okay, well, I think I'm turning it right back to Christie again.
It's for me.
Start us off. So, I will share the slides again, Christie. And we'll get a little update on multilingual.
We're going to start off with RBG because that's where a lot of our energy has been. And just briefly, we are real close to selecting our principal candidate. We have two very excellent candidates, just meeting with both of them this week. And we hope that by Friday, we'll be able to move one forward. So, it's been exciting and kind of a long process. Lindsay, not Lindsay, I'm sorry, Lucy and I and Jessica Roberts all got to take a tour of RBG last week. We were advised to wear our mud boots. So, we did. And we got hard hats and vests. And it's very impressive. It's not at all done. And Whitney is not at all worried, which makes me feel good, but it's going to be an amazing space. We have our lottery and application dates all set. We worked with comms today and we worked on the school mint process so that we have a little bit more cohesion and how the dual language is opening up. We got some good lessons in marketing today, which is not something that school leaders necessarily know how to do. So, Lindsay, or keep calling her Ray Lindsay. Everybody's Lindsay. Jessica gave us a lot of information today on how we could pretty easily get better at it, which is great because this new principal at RBG is really going to have to be a marketer for these first months to get the students in the door. And then, our parent nights are all planned, both for RBG and then, also for all the other programs. We are Lucy and Elsa and Hilda are going out tomorrow to meet with the Fruit Valley staff to talk to them about what it would be like to bring them on as a dual language school and what that would mean for them and answer any questions they have. Following week, we intend to do the same with their parents. So, we're working with FCRC to put on a parent night that will bring people in the door. Hopefully, be able to ask and answer any questions that they have and engage whether or not we're going to try and do that next year too. So, that's in the works. Roll it. This is something that's super exciting. This is another advisory group and this is district employees. But I, this is a quote from one of our toasts. I'll just let you read it, but it's, it was very heartwarming. And I wanted to make a T-shirt out of it, but we got together, Lucy and her team planned for this district advisory. I think we talked last year about getting our dual language framework together. Jeff, can you forward it one? And so, we want to be in line with the state superintendent. We want to grow our program. And so we wanna be in line with the, the state superintendent. We wanna grow our program and so, and we wanna have a framework to do that so that it's both sustainable and successful and excellent. We wanna work with the state superintendent's goal and we listened to a video of him and I had never heard this video before, but we know he has a goal of having everybody have a program by 2040. But what he really said is he wants Washington to have the most and the best programs in the whole United States. And I was like, oh, I can get into that. I'm very competitive at heart. So that really, that lit me up. So I thought I'd include this map. We're actually well on our way. We have between a hundred and two hundred programs. Beyond what we want for Washington state, we actually, as you know, have a goal for Vancouver to be the best in Washington and attract the most students and staff and act as a lab school. That's been a big part of our platform for recruiting and hiring the principal.
Can I ask a question about this graph or this map? Are those just straight numbers like, like the 101 to 200? That's just number of programs? Okay. So like, I'm just looking at, obviously like comparing us to California that is over 200, but like the population of California and like the number of districts would be significantly higher. So. And like, I mean, the same probably with Texas and New York, so. I mean, so I'm just looking at this, I mean, in that. I mean, I was almost think like if it was percentage wise, I feel like already we are pretty strong, which is great, but it also makes me really excited to. I mean, you say like the most in the country and I'm like, oh, that's a lofty goal, but it's like, wow, I mean, like I'm looking at this and I'm thinking that's, that could be realistic. I mean, that sounds.
Yeah.
Just looking at this.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah.
And then you, I'm, I'm glad we're not one of those gray states in the middle where they're not even on board yet, so. Next slide. So these are just, these are some of the things that we went over with the people in the advisory committee and Lucy did a really nice job inviting a really wide variety. We have people from HR, from communications, from definitely the educational ranks, but a sprinkling of people all over, cause we're really trying to ground people in the research and why we're doing this. And so these are the building blocks that we're looking at. The foundational pieces and this is what our framework will address. You can go to the next one, Jeff. And then specifically these, this is the work, this, the guiding principles from the Center for dual language education is, is driving this. We've got the three pillars, the seven strands and the two components. So again, trying to ground people in research around why we're doing this, what this brings for us and how we're using it as a language acquisition model. So next slide. By the end of the game, once we're done with our framework, this is what we're anticipating. That we have guidance. We know how to evaluate our program and make sure that we know what, what is working and what needs attention. That we can keep growing and we have a roadmap for how to do that. And that we have a living document and it's not likely that all of us will always be here. And so we don't want this to be one of those leadership endeavors that kind of goes away when the person goes away. We want this to be a strong piece of, of the VPS identity. And one more, I think. I put this up here because it was a good reminder for Lucy and I, and so I thought maybe it would be a good reminder for you. It's messy. There's a lot of things that are already in place and a lot of things that are partially in place and a lot of things that are not yet in place. And so how we get there, who we involve matters a lot. And we have to give ourselves a lot of grace about how long it's gonna take and the mistakes we might make. So that's been our message that we, it, we do. We know it's gonna be messy and we wanna get our hands dirty. This is time and it's, it's important work. So speaking of messy, and I think this is my last slide, Jeff, for sure. But for really, you can. And I did this, it's too much print on this slide, so I did it as a fade in, just so we can talk about the pieces. If you'll give me one more piece, Jeff, that'd be great. We are looking to focus on middle school next year and multilingual, both for dual language and for English language development services. Middle school is, is not a super strong point and it's a, it's a place where we, we know we're losing kids. So to be a real dual language middle school program, half the day needs to be in Spanish and we're not there yet. So we're actively recruiting Spanish-speaking teachers who are endorsed in a content area so that we can start to add that. We're, Lucy is diligently working with the principals, both Travis and Esteban, so that they understand what's needed. Kind of where they are now, what it's gonna take to get them there. And then Jeff, can you give me another one? And then there's the piece around making sure that newcomer kids, recently arrived children can stay in their home communities at their own schools. We will no longer be sending all those kids to MAC. We really believe that it mirrors our belonging work, it mirrors our equity work. So we want schools to be prepared. Part of that again is hearts and minds work that we really see these children as assets. They bring their own culture, their language, their literacy to us and we need to embrace and welcome that. One more. Keep going, then we do this, these little bullets faster. Part of what we know we need to do is make sure that those environments are welcoming. So how are they greeted in the office? How do we make sure clerks understand we're not sending kids to MAC anymore? How do we engage those parents? We also need to take a good, hard look at our, our instruction and make sure that all of our mid, middle school kids and our multilingual kids are having access and success with with grade level standards and we are not there. And so what does that look like? How do we shelter instruction? How does a general teacher partner with a multilingual teacher to make that happen? And so we're coming up with plans like this is gonna happen and you're gonna work with them and we're gonna look at some co-teaching models next year. So teachers have the support to make that change. One more. You can finish it off for me. So there's professional development in the works. There is newcomer plans in the works. And then there is also work with Lutheran Family Services. We're partnering with them so that we have a, a good, better understanding of the people that are coming to us. If you, I think there's one more bullet perhaps on that, Jeff. Or maybe it's just, there it is. Over the next few months, we're expected, expecting up to a hundred and fifty, maybe more families to arrive. And we wanna be better prepared for them linguistically and culturally and know how, how to help them connect and engage with us. And right now we're working with a multilingual teacher who speaks Russian and Ukrainian. And Lucy's got her as an itinerant going out and helping welcoming families, making sure people can get connected. So it's a real different model than what we've done before. And takes a little bit of intensive person power, but I think is the right way to go while we're supporting teachers and families to make this change. I think that's it, Jeff. And I didn't cough at all, so. That's all good.
Any questions for Christie related to this?
Christie, I love the idea that you're partnering with the Lutheran family. I forget now, it's not up in front of me, so it did, but they are so well-known for their help with refugees and getting re-established. As a matter of fact, there was a news report today. I was listening on NPR about with the new initiative to encourage private citizens to sponsor refugees and be supported through both Luther Network and through the government. It's a really cool thing and it's gonna be happening here, you know, so I mean, it already is happening. I was in a school yesterday where two of the kiddos were brand new from the Ukraine. And it's, you know, that brings its own unique set of needs and traumas, but but I think that's just a great resource that I wish we'd been tapping along.
Yeah, I think it's clear that we're going to need as many partners as we can get.
I'm gonna, I have a, just a, first of all, I'm super excited about middle school. I'm looking forward to those conversations next year. I, I just have a question and this is like one of your very, very small little points and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on it. But I'm just curious about the Fruit Valley. You had conversations coming up about that. Are we thinking, are we envisioning that as a, like a completely dual language school like RBG or bringing a dual language program to Fruit Valley?
That's part of what we want to talk to them about. If they stay the size that they are, by default, they would end up being all dual language. But there's also the possibility that by adding just the program, that it would bring people to Fruit Valley and help it grow. And that says they have the capacity to have two classes at every grade level, so they have the physical space. So it's, we don't know. I, I think it really depends on how many kids show up and how many classes we can get going. We would want a really healthy-sized kindergarten, cause we have to overplan in kinders so that we don't die from attrition in fifth grade. So I think we're, we're real interested to see what the community thinks. So far, the, the community that we've been able to talk to is really excited. But we need to hear from staff and and, and more parents. It's mostly, we've been talking to staff.
I anticipate more information to come then. Thank you.
That's a direct, as the feedback from the board when we talked about this last time. There was concerns about just the size of Fruit Valley and, and that programming. And so uh, appreciate Christine and the team, you know, setting up these opportunities just to hear from them and, and what is it that they want and how could we support that? Um, moving forward. So we appreciate the board's input on that and trying to respond to it accordingly.
I, I appreciate the open or the flexible approach to Fruit Valley. I mean, when you go into the kindergarten class, they're almost, you know, it's hinting towards dual language. So the way that they structure kindergarten at Fruit Valley. So you know, what are, I, I like that we're approaching new programming in a, what would work in this building versus this is our set structure and this is how we apply it outwards. I, I echo what Director Smith said around the middle school. I think that's something that's such a huge opportunity. I also like that it's being done under multi-language learners, not necessarily just prescriptively dual language. And knowing similar to the high cap, that there's a continuum of services around language. And that it's more, it feels more organic and inclusive. And I think the district has struggled to really continue through middle and high school in the past, but maybe if we have a more organic, inclusive approach to secondary that will have, will have less attrition and, and a bigger program. Um, so thank you for all that you've done. My one question around RBG, and I do understand the, the need for marketing. Will there be overflow referrals from the current programs and buildings? So for instance, the four programs we have, if they are overcapacity, I mean, will we be referring students to RBG if there's extra interest maybe, but at another building?
That is part of the process already, that if you don't get into your homeschool, are you interested in any of the surrounding schools? RBG could be included in that. And we are also applying the school of choice lottery to RBG so that maybe, you know, there'd be ten slots from Fruit Valley and two slots from Folita based on the headwind's tailwind. So it's it's gonna have sort of a dual enrollment pattern, both, both for the magnet or school of choice and for the dual language. So curious to see how we're able to meld that together and, and that would be a great problem to have, that we have too many kids and we gotta figure out where to put them.
No, I mean, I've always known that some of the lotteries are really high demand. And so if we can serve students just maybe in alternate buildings, but I am so, I mean, this is one of the key issues that brought me onto the school board. And so I am so excited by the direction and momentum that we have and I absolutely love that you wanna be the best in Washington state and the, will be the leaders in dual language.
It's exciting. And again, the, the team is fabulous. So we've got a lot of really brilliant, hardworking leaders and teachers that are really, they're getting after it. So it's great.
One last, I think, comment is I think the board, because I know there's so many champions of dual language on the board. If there is policy level focus that you need from us, I know that we would be ready to put forward that, you know, intention, just to make sure that we solidify your work.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, cause I was just talking to Mary Lee. As a result of the uh, lottery slash magnet process. She sent some stuff for us to look at and it included dual language and I asked her to take it back out. And so we've been talking about creating separate policy for dual language, but it would be as a result of the framework. So I wanna get the framework done. And then that would transition us into policy. And then we can kind of get a look at how does the magnet lottery versus a regular lottery? Like how does that all work together? That'll inform the policy quite a bit. But yes, I, I think it needs, again, this if we're gonna have this be part of our identity, it needs to be codified somehow so that other people can move it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity. This has been fun work.
I can see Christie, why you always have a cough, why you're always feeling sick, cause I don't think you're getting any sleep.
Thank you, Christie. Uh, any other questions or comments?
No, just thank you, thank you for all your hard work, Christie.
You got it. It's been fun.
All right. Well, I will take us to the last topic that we have scheduled for the study session this evening. And it's a nice segue, huh? Because part of the process that Christie and the team are working on with RBG and, and dual language is thinking about our programs of choice and some of the the board wanted to look at this policy and make some changes. And so I'll give you just a quick overview and then I know Director Sproll and Directors of ALA, I think, were a part of a, a meeting today. Um, to kind of start this, so I'll defer to, to you, Director Sproll, on kind of where this is at. As we look to the February fourteenth board meeting, so. But first of all, one of the drivers of this is the equity policy that was adopted. We're almost coming up on the year anniversary of that adoption. So a lot's changed and as a result of that, a different focus and a different way we're talking about some of the decisions that we're making. And specifically under the student learning goal, we have statements about making sure that all students can benefit from the programs that we provide, including the programs of choice. Um, and we also have a language here about specifically students that are underserved or marginalized, really equity-seeking groups, right? Like everybody deserves an opportunity and access. Um, and again, we're including our extracurricular programming, our academics and some of these programs of choice that we've traditionally have. So that's been the, the driver behind it from the goal standpoint of student learning. And then another goal area was to apply an equity lens as we look at policy adoption and different procedures related to programming. And so this year you've been a part of kind of reviewing some of this examination of the current practices. And there's been some adjustments to our secondary schools, even though there are not new programs this year. We've looked at the enrollment patterns. And I think the goal that you've reflected to us anyway is that you would like these programs to mirror the larger demographics of the district and to make sure that if a student wants to get into these programs, that there shouldn't be any barriers for them other than capacity, right? Like the, like, we, we only have X amount of spaces and like Director Sproll pointed out with dual language, even in that situation, then how do we potentially meet some needs, even if it's not the first choice kind of thing. So with that, the timeline that Merrily Scarborough from Legal and Janelle Ephraim from one of our ED roles has been facilitating this work. And so back in September was when we opened up VITA with the Learning Lab progression. And then through October, did some outreach, November, starting to look at what what it means to use the equity policy with some of these programs and in particular, the secondary programs, I'm looking at the existing language of those entrance requirements or process. December started to draft the policy that would include VITA and RBG. And then our January board meeting, we had that first policy reading. Um, and then we're working towards the second reading in February. And so with that, I know in the feedback that we got in the January board meeting is wanting a little more context, I think, to the policy. The policy before was pretty, it was very short. And so I'll turn it over to Director Sproll and just talk about that subcommittee of the board, the And so I'll turn it over to Director Sproll and just talk about that subcommittee of the board that's been working with Merrily and Janelle.
Thank you, Dr. Snell. Um, yes, it's good timing because Doc, uh, Directors of all and I met today with both Janelle and Merrily. And we worked through the policy, I think, goals around aligning it with our equity policy, really answering the why of why we have the programs of choice and how we're going to provide equitable access to all of our students. So from the draft we saw in January, I would not say that you're gonna see a ton of changes, but we did add some language around. We kind of really focused on the alignment with the equity policy, but also kind of answering the, the why question. So it's a few, I would say reemphasized statements that you'll see, it's not gonna be major changes. And of course, add feedback to either Directors of all or myself or Merrily, because we still have time to make some revisions. And then I think it's interesting, what Christie was saying is we did get to a point with RBG as we have this intersection between choice programs and then also dual language and how we are addressing these programs within our schools and what belongs where. And there are some real process oriented items of application and transportation, et cetera, but then also differentiating between choice options and and dual language. So I think that that's going to be an ongoing conversation, it sounds like. And as we move towards a dual language policy. But for now, we, I think we all kind of talked through and had pretty strong agreement on the changes. We did add a mention of equity lens towards the application process, just to make sure that we're being very intentional around keeping that front of mind as we're identifying and selecting students. I'm happy to answer questions, too.
When do you anticipate that we will be able to review the draft? Just because I know you said like, you know, if we have questions and things like that.
I can't speak for Merrily. She is in that advisory committee, but most of the changes that we were working through were real time. I think there was a couple placeholder sentences that she needed to like still wordsmith a little bit, but I anticipate that we might have something in a week. I don't know. But it, it wasn't major that it would take weeks to.
Yeah, I just, I was in thinking ahead to our February board meeting. I was just hoping that, you know, we would have enough time to be able to each individually review it and then, you know, respond with questions. And if for some reason, another change needs to be made or just anything like that, just the time to be able to get any questions answered or.
I think we benefit from the fact that we have an extra Tuesday in January. And then where February falls, so we've got three weeks between now and our board meeting. So that should be.
I anticipate that we will probably have an opportunity to review and give feedback short, very soon.
Yeah, if it's not in this week's update of materials, then it would be in next week's. So that would give you two weeks prior to engage. And then I know Merrily and Chanel are open to, to just a conversation, right? Like if you just wanted to call them and get a little more context, because especially for directors that weren't in the meeting today, it might be helpful to just talk through that a little bit if you have questions. And then we also talked as a group that the procedures are really important because the, that's the, you know, the application of, of, of how students are getting access to these programs. And so I know that they're already working on some of those and our goal is to have anticipating some changes and recognizing that the board will consider changes at the February meeting. So we don't want to get ahead of that. But also recognizing this is something the board is interested in and has directed staff to do. So we aren't gonna wait on the procedures. We're gonna start working alongside of those, anticipating the changes that we're seeing manifest in the drafts anyway of the policy revision.
And that, that is, I mean, just for any, not that we have a large audience tonight, but if anyone's rewatching this, our, our program of choice deadline for most of our programs is February 17th. So there is, I think, some intentionality around the, the timing of trying to impact this policy.
But that doesn't include VITA, right?
That.
I, I just wanted to make sure that if people are watching, they don't like panic.
That's for secondary, I think. Are there any other questions or feedback? I think that's it, Dr. Snell. Okay, so are, as Director Decker mentioned, we do, this is a cadence of Tuesdays where we have three weeks before our next regular board meeting, so February 14th, which is also election day. And then following that, we'll have another work session or committee of the whole and study session in February, the 14th, 21st and 28th. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.